You're recording.
I'd like to call the rental planning board regular meeting order. Start with a roll call.
Martin A.
Bob Kuhn.
Roger Moore.
Tom McGinn.
Ted Rutherford, planner.
Antares Ford, secretary.
On the agenda this evening, we have approval of minutes of the January 23 meeting. Gary's auto salvage conditional use. Item two, River Road change of use in shoreline zone. Three is, I'm sorry, I missed the public hearing. We'll have on both of those. And then item three, old applications, Gary's auto salvage. Two will be River Road change of shoreline use. And new applications will follow with Pogon Road commercial building. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes of the meeting on January 4th.
Yeah.
Motion.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
No opposed? All in favor. Okay, public hearing. Ted, do you have anything to add before the public hearing on Gary's auto salvage?
No, sir.
Anybody here on Gary's auto salvage? Jerry. Nobody in opposition? Tom McDonough?
Everybody's happy.
Pull the public hearing on that. 339 River Road change of use. Anyone here in that respect?
Yes.
In meetings, Michael Tool and the attorney for the applicant.
No one in opposition? Nobody else have any comments? That'll come under the application. I'll close the public hearing on River Road. We'll go to applications. Gary's auto salvage. Conditional use renewal, proposal renewal for an existing auto salvage yard on a portion of a 16.5 acre site located at 258 River Road, tax map 40 lot 3A in R4 district. Gary Welch, the owner and applicant. Ted, you have anything about this?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is a renewal of an existing non-conforming conditional use permit, so renewal of that. The board went to the site and did a site investigation. They actually provided a map, which is pretty much the same map they provided three years ago. And the board noted that there weren't really any changes since the last time you were out there. There were no deterioration of any of the fences or other things that basically separate the facility from the surrounding residential use. I've received no complaints or any comments from any of the neighbors. And we duly noted, duly advertised this public hearing. As you recall, it was, had to be postponed because of a snowstorm. It was re-advertised and all the others were noted by this very situation.
Anybody from the board have any comments?
We have findings of fact I have to read?
Yes, you do. They're right in front of you.
We have them for.
Shoreland zone.
For shoreline.
Well, we've got lots more up here. It's just in case there's a big public conflict.
Okay.
I guess there is. Do you have? I have enough. Do you have? What about? Do you have one?
No.
Oh, I guess I did. This means sticky.
Yeah.
I thought it was my imagination that I was looking at the wrong one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the findings of facts and motion for approval. Conditional use permit, Gary's auto salvage.
Mr. Chairman, pressing in there, I'd like to make one amendment on this.
Yeah.
My zeal to keep things together, I punch holes through maps and so forth to make sure they don't get slipped out. And I punched it right through the date of completion on the map. So the date is wrong. It reads 11:30 and it should read 6:30. With revisions through 11:20. So anywhere where you see that, you need to change that to.
What are we changing now?
To 6:30. The date. Anyplace where you're going to see the date of the map, which was done by post, post-road survey. Oh, wrong one.
We don't. There's none here. He's asking you tonight.
Are you spoken?
You're in charge.
Go ahead. Okay. Should we continue with condition?
Yes, you certainly might.
Okay. Whereas on December 11, 2013, the rental planning board received a conditional use renewal application from Gary's auto salvage for continuing operation of an existing auto salvage yard on a portion of a 6.5 acre site located at 258 River Road, tax map 40 lot 3A in the R4 district. Whereas on January 25, 2014, the rental planning board conducted a public sidewalk on the subject property to investigate site conditions and compliance of the facility with conditions of both past permits and current regulations. Whereas on February 27, 2014, the rental planning board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Whereas the rental planning board has arrived at the following findings of facts. Findings of facts. One, the owner of property and the operator of the business is Gary Welch. Two, property is located at 258 River Road, tax map 40 lot 3A in R4 district. Total lot size is approximately 6.5 total acres. The property currently supports an automobile salvage yard and auto sales, autopast sales facility. The salvage yard can contain an existing, exists in excess of 200 vehicles, in which the fluids are drained into appropriate containers and disposed of by a licensed facility. On an annual basis, vehicle bodies are crushed by a mobile auto crusher and removed as scrap from the site. Five, the applicant proposes no changes to the current use and volume of processed auto salvage materials. Six, the site access is from the driveway onto River Road. No changes to access are proposed and the entrance to choice adequate site distance to the east and west of Long River Road. The facility will be served by an existing private well and sanitation facilities will be provided by a non-site septic system. Will be provided. Is that? Is provided. Okay. The salvage yard is buffered from Garells Woods subdivision by standard mature standard confines and homelocks, while an intact six-foot-high stocking trench buffers the yard from the abutters along River Road. After due review and consideration, the rental planning board has determined the application to be in performance with the criteria of section 9.7.8 of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance as follows. At the use, 9.7.1, the use is compatible with similar and general categories of use neighboring properties. Gary's auto salvage is a legally non-conforming automobile salvage facility. In the R4 district, the applicant is proposing no new expansions or activities that would impact the adjacent properties and uses.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the 9.7.8 one was read wrong. So that first paragraph was 9.7.8 instead 7.1.
9.7.8.1.
You just read it wrong.
Exactly. 9.7.8.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a word on each of these?
You need a motion on each one, please?
Oh, okay.
We'll have a motion on that. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
9.7.8.2. The use is consistent with the confines of the land and the anticipated future development of neighboring neighborhood and that. The use is not consistent with the usage suggested for the R4 district in the 2007 comp plan, but the use was permitted, they permitted the use of the district in the first open and the operation has complied with all current regulations and restrictions of an auto salvage yard facility and has maintained its legal non-performing status. Therefore, the use has a legal right to continue within the confines of the present operation. How do we move?
Motion to accept. Second.
All in favor? That there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and, to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing ingress and act, ingress and egress is adequate site distance to the east or west of River Road. How do we find?
Second.
All in favor? 9.7.8.5. That there will be no noise, dust, auto vibration or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring, neighboring properties and that periodic noise is generated by annual or semi-annual crushing activities. However, these events are very detrimental. The operation does not generate dust or odors and the site lighting, consistent lighting around the office, autopast facility and buffered from adjacent properties. How do we find?
Move to accept. Second.
All in favor? None opposed. 9.7.8.6. That the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage and vegetative cover are suitable for proposed use. No changes are proposed that will impact existing slope soils and vegetation cover or drainage facilities. How do we move?
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, do we read number four? Would you make this?
No.
We might order.
I've got questions. Okay. That the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance, no nuisance, 9.7.8.7. That the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No nuisance will be generated by the proposed expansion. How do we find?
Move to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? 9.7.8.10. That all requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any current and performance standards met. The applicant has met all pertinent proportions of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance and design and proposed activities. How do we find?
Move to accept.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, again, a reading, 9.7.8.8, not 10.
I can say 10.
It'd be on the recording if you'd like to do it.
And we need to do.
Go 9.7.8.
Let's start from the beginning. What's that name?
We missed.
9.7.8.
Neither one of us having a good night, I know.
I was going to say, I'm looking good now.
That's why I asked.
9.7.8.4. We missed this one?
Yes.
That there is adequate water supply and sewer disposal will build the service to use. The site is serviced by existing onsite water septic service. How do we find?
Move to accept. Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Urundale Planning Board hereby approve the conditional use renewal of Gary's auto salvage for continuing operation of an existing auto salvage yard and auto sales facility. On a 6.5 acre site located at 258 River Road, tax map 40, lot 3A in the R4 district, subject to the following conditions. This conditional use permit expires on the 7th of 2016. Is that the right?
No.
That's not the right date?
2016. For three years, Ted?
So it should be what?
February 27, 2016.
No. We changed the date, yes?
Does it renew from the date it was expired or as of tonight?
It's as of tonight.
Okay, I'll read this back. First condition, this conditional use permit expires on February 27, 2016. It must be renewed prior to that date.
Oh, 17.
You got the 27 day.
It is the 27.
The year?
It's a four year?
Three year. This is 2014.
Okay, because it was 13.
Three and three is six.
So it's 2017.
This is 2014.
And you wrote down 2016 here.
Yeah, I know.
And it's 2017, right?
It's 2017.
Okay, let me read this again.
Playing cards today?
This condition use permit expires on February 27, 2017. It must be renewed prior to that date. The application advised of the property boundary survey will be required by the board for conditional use permit renewal in 2017. Any change from the plans signed by the planning board shall require supplemental revision plans to the board. So approved by the Urundale Planning Board is 27 day of February 2014.
Move to accept. Second. With conditions.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, fewer, just grammatical. Number seven, want to make sure it says rather than, that the existing private well and sanitation facilities will be provided.
Yeah, I'm glad you looked, I asked that question.
Provided by, and they have A, then and, so stress the A. Then number four, the first line, it's, it's supporting automobile salvage yard. And the way I'm, I think it should be is A, and auto sales and autopast sales, the word is a slash.
We've already approved it. You can't amend it again unless you go back and want to amend the whole thing.
Do we make a motion for the?
Well, but this is the discussion for the approval of the whole thing. That's administrative. That shouldn't matter.
I thought we did.
It's approved. We're not changing anything.
Yes, I find it's just a corner in the wrong place, so you can liberate it. Okay, well, you want to change a punctuation?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a punctuation.
Okay, I thought you wanted to add something. But I was in the findings of facts and I'd be the pool of the conditions. Okay.
So it's just punctuation.
Okay. And my last thing, a portion on number two at the end. Application advised of property boundary survey is required. Is that all this? No, you required it last time and we waived it this time.
No, because he had, he had the, there was some discussion because.
Yeah, you guys had that discussion.
The time that has gone by, the same one to board, rather than have submitted this time and said that, hey, just make everybody aware, we're all on the same page.
All right.
Next time.
Right about that. Because normally it's, it's required. Okay, so we just, just like a reminder that it would be. Next time. Okay. Question. I like it.
I like it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we have, you want to give us a clear copy of the sign?
Yep. Can you get us another copy of that, a MyLark or a reproducible copy of that, a wood map, so we can sign that, put it in the record? Get your new one? Yeah. Okay. Perfect, good. You guys all, they all sign? Yeah, they all sign. They'll sign the same time after I change all the dates.
Between snowstorms and everything else.
Just get you some new copies? Just one. Give me three. Three? Yeah, one for you and two for the record. Okay.
And you said you wanted that on MyLark?
I'd like one of them on MyLark. Okay. It's a reproducible, it's the.
A MyLark copy you want.
Give it to them at the copy place, they'll do it for you there.
Turn the hell.
Do you want MyLark? Yeah, one on MyLark.
You can draw it.
Can draw on it? We'll get you one, do mine.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, all set.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, no application, 339 River Road change of use in shoreline zone, determination of the purpose. Proposed application to change the use of existing fishing hatchery and research facility by residential use and floor area expansion of existing structure in accordance with provisions of section 5.2.8.4, 5.2.8.1A of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance on a 3.22 acre site located at 339 River Road, tax map 42 lot 7 in the NRC, RP and SO zones. Charles C. Bassett is the owner and applicant. Have any comments? Anything to add?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, just to answer questions, we brought new MyLarks and copies to the city. I understand you folks taking the sidewalk and.
We got.
And no changes on the supplemental on the MyLark to vote?
The board reviewed? Yes, I checked it. Okay. Just want to make sure. It's the same one.
It's the same one. That's the other vote.
My date is the one, the only thing that's wrong in all this. Okay.
Rather than that, I have to turn it over to you, have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, we'll go to findings of facts. See if we can get this one right. Urundale Planning Board findings of facts and motion for approval. Shoreland zoning permit for change of use, 339 River Road. Whereas on December 11, 2013, the Urundale Planning Board received an application to change the use of an existing fishing hatchery and research facility where residential use and the expanded existing floor area, expansion of existing structure in accordance with provisions of section 5.2.8.4 and 5.2.8.1A of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance on 3.22 acre site located at 339 River Road, tax map 42 lot 7 in the NRC, RP and SO zones.
Can I just talk to that? I realize I should have pointed it out on the other floor. But another great thing, you have the, to expand the existing floor area expansion. We don't need expansion twice. The first word in the third line.
So you're going to take out expansion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas on January 25, 2014, the Urundale Planning Board conducted a public sidewalk on the subject property to investigate site conditions and compliance of the facility with conditions of both past permits and current regulations. And it was a very warm day, that January 25.
It dropped the snow like freezing.
Whereas on February 27, 2014, the Urundale Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Whereas the Urundale Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of facts. One, the owner of the property is Charles Bassett. Two, the property is located at 339 River Road, tax map 42 lot 7 in the NRC, RP and SO zones. Total lot size is approximately 3.22 acres. The proposed parcel B currently contains an existing 1,802 square foot non-residential structure located within a resource, resource protection district and is or has been used as a fish hatchery and research facility. The existing septic system is located within the RP district as is a portion of the shared driveway access to River Road. Five, the applicant proposes to convert the current non-residential use into a residential use and add a 1,176 square foot addition to the existing structure, of which 250 square feet is proposed to be built in, built in within 100 feet of the high tide of the Kennebunk River Resource Protection District. And the remaining 926 square feet will be constructed outside 100-foot setback or within the shoreline activity overlay district.
Yeah, I'll get rid of the in before within. Get that, I think.
Okay. The applicant is permitted by the section 5.2.8.1 of the Land Use Ordinance to expand up to 30% of existing structure within the 100-foot setback zone. The applicant proposes to expand the existing building by 13.8% within the 100-foot setback. Seven, the applicant proposes to construct a separate driveway access from River Road on the property, of which 145, 180 feet will be located in the SO district, thereby eliminating current driveways, incursions in the RP zone. The existing structure is served by a septic system located on the south side of the hatchery building within the RP zone and on the edge of the associate wetlands of the Kennebunk River. The applicant proposes to install a new septic tank on the outside of the existing structure and pumping effluent to a new septic field near River Road and outside the RP and SO districts. Nine, the applicant proposes to install sill fences, erosion sill fences between all disturbed areas and the resources areas, resource areas indicated on the plans prepared by the post-road surveying dated 11/30/13. That's the correct.
6/30/13.
What was that?
6/30/13.
Facility will be served by an existing private well. Conclusion, after due review and consideration, the Urundale Planning Board has determined the application to be in performance with the criteria of section 5.2.8.4 of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance as follows. One, proposed change of use from commercial to residential represents a lesser intensity of use at the current.
And the current.
And.
Add one extra current use in there.
Yeah, okay. And the current use. The proposed change of use will improve surface water quality within the shoreline zone in that the applicant intends to relocate surface septic system from the RP zone to outside the shoreline zone, thereby reducing the risk of subsurface contamination of surface entitled waters. Three, the construction of proposed residential expansion will not increase soil instability or sedimentation in that the applicant proposes to install sediment control devices and stabilize disturbed wetlands within the shoreline zone. Four, there is no evidence that the proposed conversion will impact onsite archaeological or historical resources. Five, the proposed change of use will have no impact upon existing visual cultural quality of the parcel, will not impact natural beauty and will not adversely impact public access to the resource. Six, the proposed change of use and building expansions will appear outside the 100-year floodplain and therefore have no impact upon floodplain management. Seven, the proposed change of use will not adversely impact commercial fishing or maritime activities. Eight, the proposed expansion of the structure within 100 feet of the high water mark of the Kennebunk River is less than 30% expansion limit imposed by section 5.2.8.1 of the Land Use Ordinance.
Question.
Yes.
If it's not, if this was a hatchery, hatchery which producing fish. What kind of fish were being produced? Just asking because it will affect. It hasn't really. They haven't been. It's like, they haven't been for a long.
That hatch has been shut down for four years. My understanding is that it was some sort of experimental thing, that they were raising salmon, but they weren't letting them out into the water. They were raising salmon and then they were using it for some sort of. They were raising salmon fry and using it for various experiments. Right, but they didn't, it wasn't like they were hatching and letting them out. It was a research facility. Okay. It's been called a hatchery for so long.
It was really a research facility.
Yeah.
I have a question about number six. Proposed change of use and building expansion will occur outside the 100-year floodplain below some of it?
Some of it, yes, so, but remember in the shoreline zoning, you're limited 30%, 30% expansion. Yeah. In the RP zone. And the RP zone is defined by the 100-foot setback from the tidal waters of the Kennebunk River. It's a lot, it's in the shoreline, it's in the shoreline overlay district, but outside of the resource setback and residential use is actually permitted use in the shoreline overlay district.
Okay, so it, it'll be entirely outside with 100 foot.
No. About 250, 250, well, there's none of it in the flood.
Okay, good.
None of this in the floodplain, 250 square feet are located within the RP district.
Okay, great.
Is that? Action.
To continue that discussion, if we go back to our findings of fact and the way that it was read, because I kind of agree with your comment, Tom. The applicant proposed to convert the current non-residential use into a residential use and add a 1,176 square foot addition to the existing structure, of which 250 square feet is proposed to be built within 100 feet of the high tide of the Kennebunk River. The remaining 922, 926 square feet will be constructed outside of the 100-foot setback.
Right.
So is this one still no, there will be no, or there's, there's an acceptable level within that 100 foot?
There's an acceptable level because you're restricted 30% within that 100 foot. He's putting in 13.8%. So he's under that 30%.
So we're really three different.
Actually, no.
There's a high tide, there's the.
No, the high tide is the RP district, guys.
Yes, exactly.
But that's not the same as the floodplain.
No, the floodplain is part of the RP as well.
When it's too high and still rising.
No, which we've got, we've got resource, anything that's within the 100-year floodplain of the Kennebunk River by state statute is in fact within the RP district, okay? Plus on top of that, Kennebunk River is titled in this area. And therefore, within 100 feet of the high watermark of the, or the high tide mark, that that is also within the R P district. So, there are two different criteria there determining the R P district, and of course, the most extreme of those is the determinant, and the most extreme in that is the hundred-foot setback from the high water. So if you look at your map, they've got two different lines shown. And the, the expansion that's going to be occurring, which is the L that actually deflects off towards River Road, is in fact the expansion area and two hundred and fifty square feet of that are within that hundred-foot setback from the high tide mark. So two hundred, the, the high tide mark is in fact the R P district. And that's what's governed by the thirty percent maximum lifetime expansion. He can expand all he wants to in the S O district. Because you're allowed to have a single-family residence in the S O district. He's not even resourcing more than a hundred feet of extension.
Will you go on now?
There's, there's seen none of these expansions in the floodzone.
Yeah, none of the expansions in the floodzone.
It's totally outside of it.
Right, it's the hundred-foot setback from the high tide mark is the R P district.
Yeah, the question was the hundred-year floodplain.
It's none of it, it's not an issue.
Zero build in the...
Sorry?
There will be zero build.
Zero new build in the hundred-year floodplain.
Even at thirteen, even at thirteen percent.
Well, let's look at that.
I'm just going by what was read, Earth, I just want to make sure, for the record, it doesn't go back. I understand it, we went down there and approached together.
This is the, see the zone X, and the zone Y, zone A E is the hundred-year floodplain, because you can see nothing, none of the buildings is a hundred-year floodplain.
Yeah.
However, what you do have is a hundred-foot setback.
Yeah.
From the high watermark, which is this line right here, right there. And you can see, this is the section that's actually in that portion.
Remember that part we talked about?
Yeah, no, I know. The, the, this is what we're on figure is the hundred, the hundred-year floodplains.
It's not an issue.
And it, no, I know, it's supposed to be the higher mark.
Not necessarily.
Over a hundred years, the worst, that's the worst case.
No, that's not true, if you have, if you have steep, if you have a steep bank, okay?
Which they do.
Which they do, that's what's contained in the hundred-year floodmark. It's not going to expand out. Meanwhile, the hundred foot, and that's the situation where you have contained it because of topography, that's set, then actually the horizontal measurement of one hundred feet would actually exceed the floodplain. If we had flat flood, you're probably right, it would be the opposite.
Yes, but turn on your topo, turn on your, have your height, and turn, and then what they were saying for the height of the floodplain, they're going on a flat surface, they're going on a topo. This is the portion that's not.
That's outside, that, that, that is something that, this is not being considered, this is an existing structure.
Yeah.
On a, on a separate lot.
Right.
Yeah, okay?
But the portion...
This is the, this is the structure under consideration, and this is the portion that's within the shoreline, within the R P district that it's doing.
And he's, and he could expand within this area thirty.
He could expand within the, within thirty percent. So he's basically got something.
I agree, I, I just want to make sure that all of the work that we're...
He's got like thirty, he's got twenty-two percent more he could expand if he wanted.
I agree, so. Thank you, thank you.
We all said no, thanks to the...
A lot of lines, but, you know, when you're talking about two different zones.
Yeah.
The action of the planning board therefore be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Urano Planning Board hereby finds the application of Charles Bassett to be in conformance with sections five point two, point A, point four, and five point two, point A, point one, A, of the Urano Land Use Ordinance hereby approved the change of use of property located at three thirty-nine River Road from a non-residential use to a single-family residence is subject to the following conditions. The applicant, one, the applicant shall install all solar erosion control measures shown on the approved site plan prepared by post-road survey and dated, uh, eleven thirty seventeen.
Six thirty thirteen.
Six thirty thirteen. Six thirty two thousand thirteen, prior to any construction activities on the site. Sub-solar erosion control devices shall be maintained at all times, and all exposed soils shall be stabilized with a C, S C S approved grass mix as soon as possible. No exposed soils shall be left unstabilized over the winter. Two, all improvements on the site within the shoreline zone shall be constructed and strictly conform with the approved plans prepared by post-road surveys dated six thirty two thousand fourteen. Any change from plans assigned by the planning board shall require supplemental revised plans to the board. So, everybody at Urano Planning Board, twenty-seventh day of February two thousand fourteen. How do we vote?
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor? Oppose?
Okay. I'll make the amendments that you wanted to this, but in the interim, what we can do is sign the myler. You see these today, we reviewed them, their components were what was submitted. I'll have the myler, and we can go around the horn, I can start with the paper on the other side. Do you want to start the paper?
Sure.
Yeah. I'll scribble down here. Put it right there, put it on the end so that everybody can... I'll leave Roger on the top.
Okay. And the pen's on there. Please, with the frame. I think it's still in the public hearing, so we took off ten times. A lot of questionnaires.
Oh, that was at your name?
Yeah, that was at the, come thinking. Well, it's come easy for you to water.
Yeah, I put a...
Thank you, sir.
I always need to play with this. Do you have a more, do you have your pen? A more, yeah. A more.
I got an extra pen, Ted, if you need that.
Thanks.
We got it. That's a, is it a myler pen? It's a myler.
Roger on the top.
Awesome.
Perfect.
That's a good, that's not the sweet.
Yeah? Says who? You don't like it? Don't want to write?
I just finished it, it looks perfect.
Yeah, that's one that, you gotta hold it, try this one, you gotta hit it more upright.
All right, give me that, I'll hold it upright.
There, well, yeah, but I'm not saying it's going to have to be...
I know.
It's a tough process. Well, no, it isn't, actually.
That's the other time, Roger.
Your name, good.
We got it, zip.
So who's left? Nobody?
Got more scribbles?
I can save it. And, and it's the...
Twenty-seven.
Kind of losing it.
Two zero one two, yeah.
Wasn't this the name or something? What? Uh, that's one steel, they changed the name, remember?
Yeah, I say not.
They were bought out and they changed the name. All right, very good.
What's yours?
Southern Maine?
Southern Maine, we're supposed to call that so.
Well, those were nice, big one.
Yeah, they were. No, they, they, they were technically designed because they did not get their completion, their determination of completeness within six months. So they reapply.
Being proposed.
Thank you. All right, good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Kitty, tell them that they hired a chip for him.
I will.
Okay.
Make a telephone call.
Yeah, make a telephone call, tell them your deal's over.
He's got a nice location, and it's good use for that property.
Yeah.
Nice old local in the river. Sure it's nice and sound, right, there you go.
Okay, then we're going to end the sheet. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, the next item is one steel, or otherwise known as an aim, since it's been sold, but it hasn't, in fact, been sold. Um, I was in a conversation with the, uh, there's been like three players in that, and what they wanted, and you may recall, the last time they ran, I advised them that if they had any changes they wanted to make, any improvements they wanted to make to the site, uh, they better do it now, since they were before the planning board. And a couple of days ago, they came up and said they want to put in a, a truck scale and a payment station at the front gate. And I advised them that it would be best served if they put that on the plan, included all those things on the plan, and made one site plan, because right now they have three different maps they want to get, and I told them to consolidate it. And they agreed that they would get it all on one plan and include the, all the, not only the, the location of that scale, but, you know, all the specs on there as well, and details, construction details. They asked to be postponed till the thirteenth. Not sure they'll make it, but they'll, they're going to try, so. They asked to be postponed to the next plan.
Correct.
Okay. So the Maine Marine also called and asked if they, they also be postponed. Their engineer's in Florida right now, and there's some other changes they may want to make with the plan. So I've also advised the owner that because they did not receive determination of completeness within six months, that their application already was denied and that they had to be submitted, they already had done. So, we paid the fees today, but nobody was available to come to make the visitation. So they also asked to be, um, basically postponed to the next meeting. So that leaves one, one application left.
Okay, there's, um, thirteen sixty-two Palm Road Commercial Building, initially used, applicant proposed construction of a five thousand five hundred and twenty square foot building, where future one thousand two ninety-six square foot expansion containing low-impact manufacturing, warehouse, and a retail use on one point nine six acres located at thirteen sixty-two Palm Road, tax map thirty-four, lot four A, in the C C S district. Lord Boys LLC is the owner, applicant, and Steve Doe, Surveyor Techniques, is the applicant agent. Anything for you, gentlemen? Close yours.
All right.
Oh, you did it.
I'm proud of you.
Good, because ours is broke.
What's that?
Ours is broken.
Um, my name's Steve Doe, and with me tonight is Kevin Moore, um, from Lord Boys LLC. Um, what Kevin's proposing is he's looking to, um, put up the, this, um, call it a one-story with a mezzanine metal building. He's looking to do this in two phases. The first phase would be the, the main portion of the building, which will have the low-impact manufacturing, which is his business, makes granite countertops, so that would be the advanced portion. Um, he's going to operate in a portion of the building, the rest of it, um, is set up more like bays, uh, which would be kind of the warehouse use, where he'll lease those spaces out to, you know, to tenants. The second phase would be a small retail portion in the front of that, about twelve hundred square feet. He wants to get approval for it, but he'll build it, I don't know, a couple of years or so. And that's where he would sell the granite, the countertops. It supports his other business, Thomas and Moore, uh, which is a building company. So this is an undeveloped site, just under two acres, um, and will have a drive that comes in off Route One. This will be, be designed to accommodate tractor-trailers, so they're not backing in or anything, so tractor-trailers will be able to pull in, back up into this turnaround and then exit. We have eighteen parking spaces on site. We've set up roughly about five of them in the front here, so when this does become a retail space, there'll be places for customers to park fairly close to the front, to the retail building. Employees will be able to park in these remaining spaces. He is going to have a, kind of a outdoor storage yard over here, which is, I'm assuming, for the granite slabs and, I don't know if there's any other tenants that will put things. So that's, uh, we've limited it to twenty-five hundred square feet, so that's the size of that. This would be the dumpster location down there at the end. We, as far as, we dealt with stormwater on the site. Roughly from this point, we've captured all the stormwater into a, a treatment basin over here, um, which will treat the water, it'll go through a filter system, a sand filter bed, before it outlets into the, the wetland. We've concentrated the development on the upland portion of the property. It's hard to read on here, but this is essentially a wetland area, a large wetland area that drains in that direction. We are crossing a little bit of wetlands up in here, there's some off-site water that flows into site, um, so we're crossing that and building on the upland portion of the property. We've limited impacts to like thirty-five hundred square feet, so it's very small impact to wetlands.
So this will be, DEP application will be, uh, permanent by law.
Yeah, and they're maybe, you know, maybe get notification when it's set. Septic system's going to be located back here under the outdoor storage area, there'll be a chamber system, so you can actually drive over it. The granite processing, uh, will have some water as part of that, so we're going to have another septic system that'll be located under the parking lot that just deals with the water coming out of the granite processing. It's really just gray water, you know, water with the granite on it. Be served by public water, there's a twenty-inch main on the opposite side of Route One, so we'll come in with, we're showing a two-inch line that may be downgraded to one inch, um, but, and that'll come in and then feed the back. Power's already here, there's an overhead pole, a pole with overhead power, so we'll go underground to the building from there. That's really just a bit. We already have an M D O T permit. Light fixtures will be limited to building-mounted fixtures, so they're full cutoff fixtures, uh, with touch sheets in the back. That's it, unless you have anything you want to add?
I, I have a couple of questions for you. I'll go back to the application itself, um, for site plan requirements existing and proposed rights of way easements and other legal restrictions. You've indicated does not, that does not apply, is that because there are none?
There are none.
And in my listening. There's also two, does it always apply to every? The alienation of existing and proposed public and private easements on or directly adjacent to the property. Again, you've indicated it doesn't apply, and again, I'm assuming it's because there are none.
There are none.
Uh, the other, what you should decide, uh, you've done, and item nine, other studies, proposed number of workers and stuff, I'm looking at the traffic impact study and groundwater analysis, that's, I'm really interested in why you don't feel, uh, anything more than the main D E P permit for moving stuff, fulfilling stuff that's required. Is it all type D?
As far as the, uh...
Water.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any more D E P permits. They would look at, if we're filling over forty-three hundred square feet of wetlands, there would be a permit that we'd have to go through, and we've stayed under that threshold. There's no other things that would trip D E P, um, on this.
And for traffic impact, how many employees, what's the, traffic and, uh, for, I said, I knew you were saying I'm running.
Right.
Depending on what those numbers are.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have four employees currently, and I expect to rent out a bay, possibly two, to maybe a landscape. Yeah, I mean, I have four employees currently and I expect to rent out a bay, possibly two to maybe a landscape company or, you know, somebody that size who would have a couple of trucks and a trailer or two. Not sure their employees would be meeting there every day, but you know, their equipment would be there, they have space to work on and, and sort of.
At the moment, your, your plan shows parking spaces for four?
18. 18 spaces.
Oh yeah, I see, yeah.
For retail.
Okay, retail, I got some parking, kind of parking summary. The retail space, based on the square footage, requires five spaces. You know, so we, we place those up front, that doesn't mean that, you know, somebody else can't park there. But we try to designate those up front as retail.
There's no security concerns, I know you're gonna have the, well, like, the, the letter that's generally required from the deputy is make sure he's comfortable with the site, that you're... He's familiar, there's access, need to look for that kind of thing with the night. That's something that we require on everyone? Cause here they're saying it doesn't apply. It seems like...
That's discretionary on your part? If you recall, on a public safety issue, is whether or not this is a public safety?
It should say, I don't, I don't see it as a public safety issue, but as an owner, an issue, all that.
Yeah.
While it may not apply, it may be beneficial to get the letter so that you're comfortable with that. The guy you do is that the site is okay, active, like it's... I don't know what they need you to do.
I thought about meeting it, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm a scientist about that. There'll definitely be some surveillance.
Usually we get a letter when we're involved in crowds, uses that would involve lots of crowds. Bentley's is a good example right there. Also situations where we have a product that might be exported.
If you could carry one on slabs, you can have it.
We've had a couple of medical marijuana applications in which we've, we've had, in which input from sheriff's department was, was critical, especially in controlled substances. That's usually where we involve it, we don't do it, it's not really necessarily security of the facility, it's public safety, not the security of the facility. Usually we've had, you know, less to the owners, pretty adamant about that.
Question?
Yes.
Where's? One building, but also two with a second building turn of different mailing addresses. Would that constitute a private way? Because? Have you had two? Two for 911? It constituted a private way?
Well, our definition for private way is usually based on the number of housing units and commercial units.
I stand corrected. Cause they're uh, I had two units, one garage, one other building. It was constituted a private way?
Well, that must have been under a different interpreter.
Uh, because of purpose of 911.
Yeah.
I'm just asking a question now, so that's thrown out.
Well, no, I, I, it's not, 911 is not gonna dictate whether or not something's a private way, to be honest with you. 911 is, is a question of parcel identification or location identification for the purposes of ensuring that, you know, emergency services can get there and, and find the location quickly and easily. I think this will probably end up being one 911 address at this point. There may be different subdivisions within it, but I think it's gonna end up being one 911 address.
Okay, I just, just ask for that question.
If it was separate buildings, then you're right, then it might.
Okay, these are separate buildings, that's fine.
This is one continuous.
Okay, I, I, that answers my thought and question. Thank you.
Does any, does the board have any questions about the operation? In terms of cutting of, of grain?
Most of the time that probably is done during the day?
Yes, and it's indoors, it's all wet cut, there's no dust.
That's why you need your separate, separate, separate tank.
Right.
For the dust.
Exactly.
For lubricant.
Exactly.
So you're already doing this?
Yes, I, I operate now, I have a warehouse rental space in Denver, yeah.
The noise component, I know it shows all the nicely prepared documents, nicely agreed through and referred back. So all of the, all of the mechanical in support noise is contained within the building.
In the building, yeah.
And summer, summertime, door are closed. How close is our, close is the butter here? I mean, you gotta, you gotta stay within the decimal limit of...
Yeah, it's, it's the lobster, it's the lobster company south.
And Gunther, Gennard, SL Tech next door. And there's quite a distance between one to the other.
There's a, essentially a blank lot on south.
Yes.
Yeah.
How far is that?
Well, the closest homes are gonna be on St. Limerick Road.
Okay.
And they're probably 400 feet away diagonally, so they would be off, they'd be off over here. The Fish Place is...
Way down.
Yeah, that's...
And then the one up to the north side is SL Tech, eh, which is a full lot, 200 feet minimum frontage.
Any sound would be generated in that pressure.
That's what I say is, cause he's 200 feet, cause there's another lot right there. I think it was 195 feet correctly to, to the property, to that next one zone is...
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, did you also say, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question about the noise too, so just for a heads up, if, if there were complaints, then...
Yeah, I guess we close the door.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, the, the equipment, the way it's, it's lubricated with the water, it's really no louder than running a skill saw.
Yeah.
So if you're in your garage running a skill saw and you have your door open, I mean, that's about the extent of the noise.
It's a glorified brick pattern, isn't it?
So I, I have a question about how the bays are set up. You, you said you're gonna be renting some of them out, but there's five, four bays plus the office. So, but they're not really attached to each other, so they all be like set up as separate?
I, I think what's gonna happen is um, there's gonna be offices here.
Yeah.
I own a construction company now. So I'll have my construction company offices here with storage for my construction company. And then this wall, I might take all this space for my granite fabrication and storage, and I, so I might only be renting one bay. These were all, they're just non-bearing positions that we could put up or not.
Uh, it just, it just seemed like the way it was set up, you have to go out.
Well, you know, initially I, I would have liked to, I rented two, but the more I look at the space, I think I might fully have.
Space, space becomes...
I know, I know.
Just coming up.
Yeah.
It depends on what toys you get.
And of course, you know, the zoning will probably change by the time these guys build this.
It should be more in their favor, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, well, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at that too. So even if, we talked change it.
Yeah, yeah, I plan on uh, breaking ground as soon as we get approved. I don't plan on back bringing it in. Paying too much rent right now, I'd like to be able to...
The applicant's requested two waivers.
Yeah, so is.
Should we wait on those or go ahead and address them?
Well, I'm thinking they're gonna have to be, even if we waive it, they're gonna have to be done for final approval anyway.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, but...
Like what was the cost estimate?
And the signage?
Oh, the signage.
Well, the signage isn't required, I mean, they can come back and get the sign from...
The way that, the way that our application is written, it's required.
Yes.
I, it's gonna be the code enforcement officer that approves it. So from the board's perspective, typically, if you show the location and where it's gonna be, you feel comfortable with it, that it's not gonna be blocking, like, traffic connecting. Code enforcement also will double check that.
You show the location on the plan.
Yes, you do.
So they just don't have the sign in it.
Yeah, so, and my point being, for, for that, I'd be comfortable with that as a condition, have it ready before final approval, or to let you know.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's any impact on breaking out um, the cost detail sheet for you. I, I mean, or can you do work, I don't, I don't know what you're requiring here, is it the big number?
Well, the cost estimates, the cost estimates are the first, the purpose of performance assurance and stuff.
Correct, so you need the big number, not the individual breakout.
Well, I think the applicants usually like to have the individual breakouts, when they get something done, they can get the, the escrow reduced. That's, that's why I, I always recommend that, so they can, yeah.
Okay, alright. And again, from, they requested a waiver from the board, you have the, the high, the high cost, 80?
80, yeah.
80 thousand about what they were asking. If that's enough for them to see, wait in this would be fine, if, without, again, until final. Or if you need, if you need that in your discussion and how best to work with them, we can put a timeframe or something on when they should have that. That was the purpose of this conversation, make it good for the town and good for the applicant.
Have somebody support building permit issues, something like that, do, you know. Say with the sign, you know.
Okay.
Show location, if you wanna condition it to like, you know, are you, you're writing the sign, you gotta submit the design, obviously.
Well, yeah, but on the cost estimates, if they're gonna make a performance assurance, give you a performance assurance, you don't wanna do the cost estimates breakdown, so you can, you can do the drawdown.
Sure, yeah.
Might be a grab time.
Well, we don't know, see, but that's, that's why that discussion is to go out over there, not here.
So, hey, give me that next meeting just before approval, I mean, is that...
What you guys wanna do, I mean, you, you, you're gonna do the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I...
See anything always.
Bring your snowshoes.
That's what I'm saying, because you can't see anything.
I, I know your next meeting is, what, the 13th, which I can't make anyways, so if you wanna, you know, unless you wanna come along, I'd say we push it out.
Push it out. But they'll, they'll wanna, they'll want to do a sidewalk against when they can.
Yeah.
First of all, bring your hip boots and your scotch shoes. I'm just up the street from it. I'm just up the street from it.
Oh, are you? That's fine.
Oh, we do do whatever.
You want the buildings taken out?
Sure, that's great, that would be helpful.
Woodlands, if you can, conditions of woodlands.
Can't see anything right now, with everything covered in the snow.
Oh, we could, you know, stake in the snow.
As long as they, you don't get a talk before then.
Yeah. Marty brings up a very good point. There are some wetlands, although it didn't meet the threshold, have you got those all ready, Mark?
Those were done...
No, but I mean in the field.
Can't see it.
There are some flag, but...
There are some flags, it was done a while ago, so some of them have fallen off. You know, some of them are still hanging and I've gone out where the old flags were, I hung new ribbon on them.
Did you do that?
That was for Jim Logan.
Jim Logan, yeah.
But we, we flagged up ones, ones still there, I mean, we flagged, so I mean, we can look at that, it's, um, I think there's a...
It's all snowbed.
That's up to you, George.
I'm ready, huh?
Gentlemen, it's up to you gentlemen.
Yeah, I know.
It's tough to, to really see anything except there's the trees and there's the snow. I don't wanna delay, you won't wait for...
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate Steve has another allocation in the next meeting, but I would love to, following meeting, get this wrapped up.
Well, within the next month, it could be no snow, we might have rain, warmth.
And we could play by ear.
In the March, so...
Schedule it and just send me an email or something.
Christian, I think the board should schedule it. Yeah, yeah. How about, would it have to be a Saturday again? Still, even then, it would be sunset's at 5:30 probably around then.
Yeah, it's kinda nice now, you can actually walk on top of the snow if you like. It's pretty hard, you know.
We're turning the clocks ahead, March 9th, too.
March 9th?
Yes.
So it suns out later? The weather now is like 4:30, 6:00?
No.
Oh, 5:30.
5:30.
Yeah, 5:30.
6:00, 6:30.
So it'll do it before, but it'd be dusk. Well, let's see. The 6th, you have a zoning meeting.
5:20, 6:00.
You do it on the 6th, you can do this week.
Yeah, I'll follow it, throw the stakes out there.
So if we go on that shift.
I... But it's much to save it, it's the other hour.
You're gonna have it all, you're gonna have it saved each time.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be after the 9th.
Though we can't do it before the 9th anyway. March 9th? You could do it at the 6th if you wanted to, be free and zoning. Yeah, but it'd be still dark.
Right. Well, if you have to, then you get another whole hour automatically out there.
Alright, so do it after the 9th, when you wanna do it on the 13th?
Unless you do it Saturday.
What are you going on inside? Do it before a meeting would be worth it.
Yeah, we do it before a meeting.
So March 13th is your next one?
March 13th is your next, next meeting.
Scheduled meeting, right.
He's not available.
Well, that's fine, we could go out.
Well, we can go, I mean, as long as...
You do the sidewalk.
As long as the applicant says we can go out, we can be there, we can go work.
Oh, I can do the sidewalk, I just can't do the meeting after.
Fine, perfect, that'd be good.
So what time?
5:30? 5:30. Should be waiting up by there, 5?
No. March 13th?
Customer's floating.
At 5:30?
Yeah, 5:30.
5:30 and...
March 13th.
March 13th, we'll do that.
And it's for session one.
Okay. You need someone?
On that.
You'll be on the...
That one, yes.
Well, we can't bring stacks, so we can't...
Yeah, you can.
No, we can't.
To the sidewalk.
No.
Can't do the thing? March 13th?
Yes, March 13th, 5:30.
And if you have a reminder, like on the pen?
Sure.
Click on the email, please.
Yes.
1362.
You gotta meet at this side of the location.
Correct. As you can mention in your agenda, we'll mail it all, have some of it sent out.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for my mail in. Is there any other questions of the applicant?
Would you, would you guys like to be there for the sidewalk? More of the walk, we could, okay.
I'd like.
It's always good to be there.
Bring your hippos in there.
So do we need this particular site?
What action, do we need to take this point?
Do we need to take any action on those? You guys should be here.
Well, you can make a determination of completeness. Oh, this is condition use.
Condition use.
Yeah, it's not, it's not determination.
It's also site mind off, primary site mind.
Yeah, but we haven't mixed those up yet. It's still... Although frankly, considering the warehouse use you've got in there, it's not gonna be a warehouse use after June, it's gonna be a contractor's storage unit. So it's not gonna be a warehouse use. If you do landscaping, a landscape contractor, that's contractor's storage unit, that's not a warehouse, it's totally different.
Do you have any cap condition use for that house?
No.
No, it'd be a permitted use, I think.
It'd be a permitted use.
Depends on how you lay it out.
Building, big. It's all semantics.
Still building?
It doesn't matter, Steve, I mean, there's no determination of completeness or condition. We'll just keep going, okay? We need to get the sidewalk behind this thing. Okay? Alright, so we'll be out there on the 13th.
Good.
We'll set you up for the next meeting, okay? Alright.
Do we have to, do the applicant have to come in?
No, they don't have to. This is not site point. This is condition use. This is condition use. Determination of completeness is only for site point.
This is a dynamic plan, or you said plan.
Like additional use though.
Okay, so if you wanna make it.
I mean, no, no, like, terrific. Let's make a determination of completeness, I'm good with that. The application is complete as far as staff is concerned. I have everything I need to make a decision.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I'll move to, to consider it complete, yeah.
Okay, have a motion, the application is complete?
Yeah, and the only thing that drives this is when we have the, have final approval.
We have to have a publication in the.
And a final, no, so we, I can't make to, to see what it is until I at least walk and see the land. I mean, I, because I don't know.
No, that, that's different.
Just a clean application.
Paperwork.
Have they submitted all of the documents that the board does that they need to submit? We can look at that even later and.
The only thing we don't have is the, um, the, the sign and the cost, but they're requesting waivers on that, so is that?
Well, I think the applicant has indicated that it is the cost.
And, and we can make our determination.
And file up there?
They've done their request.
We're good.
Well, had the motion out there.
Yeah.
Any second.
All in favor?
All right, it's complete.
Okay. We might find.
I'm just.
I don't say it.
I'll say everything else.
So four.
Marty is saying.
Well, you approve, right?
You're in favor of that motion, thank you.
And so should we schedule the public hearing as well for that thirteenth?
No.
Yeah, I can.
Let's do the site seven, let's get that done.
Okay.
Okay? We'll schedule only for seven. We might find something on the sidewalk that could. I don't have a plug here. Right? We find something on the sidewalk that we don't like. If you can see it, it's, they had a public hearing that they, that we didn't know.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we're, we're gonna.
So we're all set, right?
Yes.
These guys can go home, right?
No, we need a plan.
Public comments, no, nobody in the public?
Does one make a comment?
Nice one.
Good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stop and say it.
Nice application, good application.
Yeah, yeah, great.
We could have thrown a couple zoning things tonight.
I know, but I didn't expect this to happen. I thought we were gonna get.
Well, we had some.
I was actually always gonna call these guys up and say, I don't know if we're gonna get to you.
Oh, we had to cancellation, so.
I didn't know that till this, in the last day.
I didn't bring my crystal ball either.
Yes, ma'am.
Stop and.
It's good?
Good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, good night.
Good night. You're not the chairman, he is.
The chairman, the S R G.
Name is Ray Paul, please.
Yes, we could have, in fact, done zoning tonight, unfortunately, I did not think we, I thought we had a fuller agenda. The agenda looks, looked full enough, and I thought we would be here for quite some time going over this stuff. So I apologize, I did not do that. However, it's part of the complaint, complaint report, I can report the following. I've already notified you guys that, that essentially, the complaint committee has approved N one through N five. They're proposed, basically, those five districts, which is the D V one, D V two, Townhouse Corner, Gateway, and they want a separate district called Gateway, Gateway District, which is the little one that's right at the Benford border, and, uh, the current C C N, or they're, they'd like to see a different name than C C N. Those districts, as we envisioned, have been approved by the planning board, so we.
By the.
By the complaint committee. And so they are, they have made amendments to the complaint to include the language for those districts. They're called mixed-use districts, but, but leaving it, you know, open enough for us to be able to call it whatever district name you want to. So they, they're just calling it mixed-use district one through five.
What about one eleven?
One eleven was a contentious enough argument that they decided that if they kept going on that, that none of us would see the light of day by, by, tell me, because there's not a consensus on the, on the complaint committee on that issue.
They may not see consensus by the complaining.
We would not see consensus on one eleven. If we waited for one eleven, we would not see, we would not see this on the warrants.
Okay, you had D V one, D V two, Townhouse, Gateway, and C C N.
C C N.
And they're, they just would like a different name.
Okay, so that's, they've done that, they've accomplished their job. The one thing they do have happening is on the fifth of March, there will be a public hearing, a second public hearing of inquiring of all the property owners in the D V two district as to what their, what their reaction is to the change of the zone. We did, you probably remember, we did have that meeting, which there was a very, very, very shallow turnout. And actually, one thing that came out of it is we had a couple property owners who said we wanna be in the district. They were the, the couple from Winthrop who came and came all the way down from Winthrop to, to attend. They have a landlocked parcel out behind Walker's Lane. They like that idea of their parcel being in the, in business district versus a residential district. So, but the complaint committee wasn't, wasn't satisfied with that. And therefore, they have scheduled this hearing in which, once again, notices went out to individual property owners. It was various personal notice addressed to them, and their individual lot numbers were specified. It wasn't just a mass mail. And that went out, and this, and tomorrow, there will be a postcard reminder that will also go out. So that we will have this hearing, and hopefully, we'll have a better turnout than we had before. Complaint committee has not made anything contingent. We're supposed to forge ahead with our zoning change, um, zoning changes prior to the, regardless of what happens with this, with this meeting, but they will come back and make it, they might make an amendment or not make an amendment based on, on what comes out of the, um, meeting. I don't want to, I don't want, they, they told us that, go ahead and, and, and proceed to write the ordinances for those particular districts and get them ready. And the town manager will be talking to the chairs of the complaint committee and the planning board about what the strategy is for getting those districts operational for town meeting. It's a real serious problem for us, because it's going to be Frankenstein ordinance, which is gonna be a fusion of the old ordinance and the new ordinance, because we don't have enough of the old, the new ordinance done to deal with all the administrative stuff, like performance standards and administration. And we have a lot of it done, but this board hasn't addressed it, and if we really look at the calendar, you're not gonna make it. So once again, we're gonna have this strange hybrid, and it's gonna be a very strange hybrid that we're gonna have to come up with in order to meet this, because we get a lot of pressure to implement the ideas that we've been talking about for two years. So, um, I would say that the, the, both the selectmen and the manager and various boards are gonna be real okay with the planning board to perform and get these things operational for town meeting. So we have a lot of work to do.
When does this have to be completed for town meeting? What's the draft date? May, what, fifteenth for this?
We have to have a public hearing, so.
We have to have a public hearings, remember that. I mean, I have to, and plus, on top of it, this is really complicated, because, because we are doing the withdraw and, I mean, not to, basically to the replacement approach, I'm gonna have to notify every single person in the affected districts. It's gonna be a huge administrative work here.
So I mean, I'm not just notify everybody that. Then you reduce your.
All fourteen hundred households.
We're required to send it by first-class mail, so you can't just do it in a newsletter.
Right.
You're required to mail an individual notice.
I under, I understand. I also understand the number of hours that it's gonna take to break down every one of these things. By the time you're done, it would be cheaper to mail.
So everybody in town?
Uh, yeah, seven hundred dollars, eh? Fifty cents or less, you know?
Cover all the bases, too.
That's up to ten.
Huh?
That's up to ten.
Yeah, well, by the time you figure just your two time, not to say the other people with bullying and mailing and, and everything else.
Going through all the rest.
You're gonna, you're gonna go through more than that every time, but you do it, you're, you're.
I, I can't do it, I have to, I have to specify what exactly, I have to include a map of the changes, of the, of the zone changes, and I have to, I can't do a mass map. I have to do a map that shows the changes in the zone and include it in, target it to those, those areas where those property owners are gonna be affected. So it's gonna be quite, quite administrative nightmare. Um, so we need time, so we have to be done by May.
Yeah, but when does everything go to print? They have to be done before print.
Yep, it is.
And.
Well, no, we don't, because we've, we've, we've done this before, or we, actually, we've, uh, we've had everything pretty much squared away, and we've had it written by, we've had it by May and gone to print. I think, what is it?
Town reports come out in the end of May.
At the end of May, and so they go what sim has.
And what we do is we reference, like, exhibit A, exhibit B, you know, in the warrant articles. You don't have to put them in the book, town reports.
And if you remember, we've done that somewhere. You remember, we were having, we were, we were having public hearings, and the selectmen were there stamping it the next day, you know, all the way up to Memorial Day at one point, if I'm not mistaken. So, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have a pretty tough schedule. We will and we won't. I mean, from one standpoint, look, D V one's done, D V two's almost done, Townhouse Corner, you know, we've got the first blush of that, we gotta work out some details. It's kind of a mimic game of a lot of stuff in D V one, although, you know.
Nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with that. And the Gateway District is D V one, with some changes. With some changes. So, and, and as far as the Alfred Road District, which is one of the things they, they proposed, I don't see a need to change anything out there right now. We haven't done a lot of work out there, and frankly, speak.
Alfred Road.
C C N, if you look at C C N, that, if anything, there'd be a change of boundaries out there. Because, I mean, half the district is an existing residential area. You know, existing, it, it overlaps existing residential houses.
It's insane at this point.
Well, no, is that where it is?
That's what it was intended to be, though. That was, it was intended to be next residential and next small business there. And if you follow the complaint, that the extension, that was to extend all the way up Route eleven as it became a hundred percent full, that whole concept up, and so that, that was.
And you said, I mean, that was supposed to go all the way down Route one eleven?
Yeah.
Not all the way down, but it was.
When you got a hundred percent, when you got a hundred percent.
The whole line. Then, it didn't say how far it expanded, but then it would expand.
Yeah, but it was directly to the pole line.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Back where it was.
Nothing, definitely.
To the pole, then it's.
It was always seventy.
Well, you, no, it doesn't, if you remember, there's a, there's a, there's a, a, um, there's a rural conservation district that's, or it's a rural, rural image district that's three hundred feet wide, or four hundred feet wide, that goes along Route one eleven, that's in the complaint, which nobody knows about, and this board has never implemented. Which requires buildings to be farm-looking, you know, agricultural-looking buildings.
Well, that's what you got.
Never.
Fire department.
No, but I mean, it's all the way down for every building, residential and non-residential.
So what should we concentrate on next week's meeting?
Probably, well, we have, we have a couple of things. Number one, we, we gotta concentrate on D V one, but we have, let me go down the list of what we got. We got a shoreline zoning, which we've got a lot of stuff in. You know, we gotta determine what we're gonna do with deer yards and, um, a number of other things. Because if we impose deer yards, if we still have deer yards, I'm gonna have to find out where the other deer yards are and put them in. Now that I found out the state, now that I found out the stuff that was keeping me as inaccurate. That's number one, number, and that our maps since two thousand seven have been accurate, that's great news. Um, so we have some stuff on shoreline zoning. We have, uh, cluster housing. We have a request from one farmer in particular wants us to take a look at agricultural signage and, and livestock limitations in various zones.
Okay, but we don't need to do this to get ready for town. This is all new stuff.
We have sales.
Yeah.
Push that to November.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should.
I mean, that's not that the board's gonna, gonna look at it, but we're on a deadline, we're not gonna do that new stuff that we're not already.
Well, it's concentrated what needs to be done for, for the May meeting, everything else is gonna wait. Okay, well, that's gonna be those, those, well, tell me, is cluster gonna be something to do? Is that gonna be one of your concentrations? Shoreline zoning, if you're shoreline zoning, you, you've got an issue, you gotta deal with it. What? The question is, is cl, are we gonna do anything with cluster this, this season?
I, I don't know how we can fit it in at this point. What's, what's the, the, the big issues on, on the shoreline zoning, say, that, that, just the deer yards, or is there more?
There's more than that.
I thought we had a lot of that already, already reworked.
Well, we, we did, um, but there's some other issues that we have to look at, because they changed some rules.
Who did?
D E P.
When?
Last year, two years ago, excuse me.
Okay.
Here's, here's what, what I think, something might.
Even less restrictive, in other words.
I'm always concerned with how is it gonna sell, you know, like, is it understandable to the voters? And the shoreline, I think we got good reason why it has to be changed, is D E P requirements, a lot, I don't know about the deer yards, but a lot of it is, is just the language, isn't it, more than anything? It's not really.
It's functional.
It's, it's.
Well, you're saying it's less restrictive, so.
It's less restrictive.
Well, no, the stuff that, the stuff that we've got is more restricted than the state right now.
Yeah, so if we were to change, our regulation would become less restrictive.
Do we wanna change?
I don't know, that's the question you guys asked.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't say, we, we can't say.
We can't say until we know what, what the changes are.
Right. But I would say what we're gonna concentrate, what we should concentrate on next week is gonna be D V one and probably, let's say, Gateway. D V one and Gateway, or Townhouse Corner, since they, they really have, the Townhouse Corner people are up in arms, they really wanna see that done. So we can do D V one, or D V two and Townhouse Corner.
D V two?
Yeah.
Are, anybody, are any of them from Townhouse Corner gonna be here?
Oh, don't worry, they'll be here.
Can we?
If we advertise it, they'll be here.
Huh?
If we advertise it, they'll be here.
So are we gonna, is this all gonna be all one, one, um, item on the agenda, one warrant, or is it all piecemeal?
Piecemeal.
D V one will be up for vote, and Townhouse Corners?
It's gonna be piecemeal.
You're not gonna do that, because you're not doing every place.
That's right.
You're not doing a, take the old ordinance and put in the whole new one.
So what happens if one of them passes and others don't?
And that's.
Look at your crystal ball reacting correspondents to situations.
Yeah, but if you change, if you change boundaries across, though.
Yeah, so it's, it's not clean cut all the time.
See, that's the good thing about the, the big zone, the big zone change, that's, it's, it's one unit, and it all goes down, and it all goes down. And, and there isn't this impact from something going down on then one side and this one passing. Yeah, that can be a problem, and that's why I hate, I hate that, I hate this approach. I like, I like the full zone, plus I don't have to notify twelve hundred people.
Yeah, we're in our, we're in our third gear, though.
I'm gonna cross that bridge.
Yeah. We'll try about that bridge.
Yep.
When we get to it.
I'm sure there, there won't be those bridges that we'll have to deal with.
Well, it's gonna be really funky, guys, because I'm not gonna change all the formats that we've got right now, because it would be really a nightmare. What I'm gonna probably do is I'm gonna take the, um, take the ordinance provisions that we've got right now, the way they're written, renumber them, but put them all as performance sections. Okay? And so there'll be performance standards in those districts, okay? And then on the chart, we'll say, refer to section, you know, when it says permitted or not permitted, we'll say, refer to section X. See how we can do it, how else am I gonna do it without, I'm gonna have to reformat everything we worked on to fit it into the current zoning ones, otherwise. How do I do that? It's gonna be a huge amount of work. And then I'm gonna have, then I'd have to redo the entire table, because we have things that aren't on the table. You know, currently, we, we became very specific about our uses, and they are on this table, so...
And if they're not on the table, you can't have them. That's why I wanted to have it left open.
Well, no, I actually, Marty, the, the issue is that, really, the, the problem was that the ta, the two formats don't fit with each other, they were never meant to fit with each other. And now because of time constraints, we're gonna have to make them fit. And the only way I could figure to make them fit was not, not to do this table, this monster table that's twenty pages long, but to basically say, refer to, in this district, refer over to performance standard eight thirteen point four. And then I'll have the entire ordinance, I mean, the entire section that we've done, only it'll be renumbered accordingly. And we'll keep the original the way it is, and then we'll keep working after June to get the whole damn thing done. And scuttle the old and bring in the new. So it's a re, it's gonna be a renumbering issue. Okay?
DB2, we had quite a bit done.
Mostly it's done.
So there, there, some, some areas of content, I'm not sure that would take all that long.
I don't think it's gonna take...
Gateway, you, you said we were gonna go right to Townhouse Corner. I thought we were all in agreement to that kind of, on Townhouse Corner. So I don't think, yes, I don't think Townhouse Corner, they just asked us to tie it up, and, and we kinda had that meeting where we did. We found some things that was in their better interest, so I think I'm...
Pretty cool.
You there?
I'm not sure. I'll have to look at that, because my notes, I don't see much change.
Uh, there wasn't much, there wasn't much, everybody was in agreement, the people from Townhouse Corner, the board, con plan, and the economic development committee was here that night, right? Everybody was here.
Yeah, but then, everybody's talking in generalities, they're not talking in specifics, and we're, we're the guys who do the specifics, right?
Yeah.
And they're all fine, they said, actually, the economic development committee didn't wanna get into the weeds, it's like...
If they, if we model it after the D1, it, it should be ninety percent the same.
And, and we did go down into the, we, we changed, we changed the size of the lots, we did, we got down to that level.
Yeah, I don't think we did, I think we got...
Well, I know we did.
I thought we did, I thought we changed frontages and setbacks. Good, and, well, okay, but I haven't made those changes yet, then. Uh, I better look at the minutes.
Townhouse Corner.
They had...
That's Townhouse Corner, isn't that actually a Gateway also?
Yeah, but that's not called the Gateway.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yes, it is a Gateway.
That's what it is now.
The Gateway.
Yeah, and we said that it was gonna be dependent on the size of what, what, the locking house, they got one per second.
Yeah, no, it was the gateway.
So you took away, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we took off.
I mean, we had a...
Were we making decisions or were we just talking about it?
I don't think we made any decisions.
Vote.
For, for instance...
We have the section for Townhouse Corner District. I don't have a date, there's no date on this copy, I think it might be the original one.
For instance, for instance, in the general write-up, it had that, for the three acre, the big, the property was gonna be three acre. Board, and in discussion with the audience back and forth, came out to be that it would be the site that would determine the size of the building, as long, where the septic was and everything else. So we had, yeah, so we had, we had taken out, yeah, I mean, that, that's huge.
We had discussions.
About what?
That we have no...
That it had to be three acres.
That's not what I wrote, I wrote one acre.
Yeah, but...
We haven't done anything, Marty, you wrote that.
We haven't done anything, we did one thing.
Remember that?
We had sidewalks and trees.
There was only three, we only retrieved that one.
That wasn't, that was, that was the one thing we did, that was the one that we really went into. And then when we had our discussion with the public, it was really on the concept of it, and there was some discussion about uses, you know, what's an appropriate use. And one of the things that was brought up was the parking lots, and everybody said no to the parking lots. No, no, no parking lots, we're not, it could be a parking lot for North Kenabong, or for Kenabong Corner, besides, we don't make any money off it. So I, I, I think the only time we've gotten into specifics is that first time that we discussed it, when I first presented to you guys.
I think when you read the minutes, we could, we...
Well, I'll, I'll look at the minutes.
We did.
Townhouse Corner is, Townhouse Corner has had precious little detail.
That's okay, we'll go, I, I, I just don't see, all right, I, Mike, the purpose of doing that was, rather than have an agenda with just those two items on it, and you might wanna be prepared to do of the third to Gateway or something.
I can put it on there, sure.
Question, here's up to the chair. Question on Townhouse Corner. How far up Lock Cameron Road is it?
John Clough Road.
Who?
John Clough Road.
Okay, how far down on River Road does it go?
Uh, goes to, uh, almost to the bridge.
You can show the map.
Yeah, a lot before the bridge. There's a subdivision at the bridge, Bedlam.
Yeah.
Does it include it?
Yeah, John Beach.
It doesn't include that subdivision.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, just before John Beach.
Are you meaning the CEO office, is that right?
What, for...
And Eleanor Heights.
March six.
Right there on that corner.
Is there gonna be a code enforcement officer here?
I'd rather do a code enforcement officer office, but it might be crowded, I mean, I kinda like it, 'cause I don't have to trash, bring as much stuff, I can just...
Then you can have mounts and everything.
Yeah, I can have maps and everything, it's just whether we have an audience.
Never had an audience. Right, you got Townhouse Corner, huh?
Uh, we'll have, we'll have probably three or four people that can sit on the wall like we did last night.
Have, have you heard any opposition to that zone?
To Townhouse Corner, no, I, I think, I think that, I think there's general consensus, everybody likes that. The, the only opposition we heard was some, from some concerns from some resident road residents, you know, about traffic change, which was a legitimate concern.
Also, too, with Townhouse Corner, how does it affect the set road where two or three of those properties are in Kenabong Forest?
Just one, they decided to corner it.
Well, it doesn't affect that at all, because we have no jurisdiction.
They don't be isolated properties.
I thought the tra, and I thought also the traffic, the general conversation was, the traffic's already going there, except they've gone right on through to Kenabong Forest.
Yeah, as it will capture some of it.
You know, is that gonna impact it, yeah, they're gonna stop hopefully.
Well, the question was, is it, will it be enough of the destination to generate more traffic than pass-through traffic? And that's the issue, is will there be enough destination activities there that will generate much more, much more business than currently exists? And, you know, that's a legitimate question.
I think it'd generate some of the business, some of the traffic that was there, because that's a stop, that, the, hopefully it's gonna be a stop and go. It's sure not gonna generate more than the traffic that's headed to Kenabong Forest.
Well, if you, let's say you go for a reestablished fourth, well, this is happening.
Have its own definition.
Question, is there free space water down there, and also, too, water, I think there is water.
Doesn't extend up to more, stops.
Not which way?
Stops, it, it stops at the river.
Well...
Does it go up, it doesn't go up Lock Cameron?
I thought Clough, oh no, I thought, uh, um...
Great natural pressure though, is, is, is a teacher.
It is, it is in fact, sand aquifer up there.
I thought the cave, I thought the cave was on town water there.
Don't know. I've, I've looked at the water district, it may, don't show it extending up Lock Cameron. It's, you know, it's stopping at the boundary.
Anything else?
What else you got for, for your board? Uh, let's see, we, we have, uh, we had another road exemption for Rocky, uh, Rocky Lane, another house lot out there. We had to reconsideration of that.
Did that ever get paved?
No.
So, if it didn't get paved...
Which one's Rocky Lane? It's an exemption, it's one of the exemption roads. Which Rocky Lane? Well, it's from, uh, Duster.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's not Phil Eppes, it's, it's a family subdivision, it's a family division. It's, uh, it's an interesting collection of lots.
Is that down there, there?
I don't know, I, I don't know the names. So we have that, let's see what else is happening.
Kate's Butter.
Yep, Kate's Butter is looking for a CEO. They will be, um...
How close are they?
I don't know, they're, they're pretty damn close, they really are close, they have a lot of trucks coming in and out. Uh, the code enforcement officer is out for a month.
What'd he do?
He has a, he had some fusion done on his vertebrae, and, uh, so he is out of service, and the code enforcement, um, duties are being handled by the CEO from the line, and I believe. So, uh, in terms of Kate's, in terms of us and Kate's, Kate's still needs to do the landscaping, I assume the board will not have a problem if I were to get a bond from them to cover the, you know, landscaping to ensure that it's done in accordance with approved plans. I did that with Weir's. Weir's couldn't plant, obviously, you know, when they had a deadline to make for GM, so I have a ten thousand dollar bond with them right now. I'll do the same thing with Kate's. Kate's also wants to, they're, they're, they're also talking about, you'll have an application, they're gonna be putting in the dairy barn. That application has been prepared, um, I've got it here, but they didn't, they only gave me one copy of the application. So I'm gonna go get them to make more copies of that for us. So they'll be doing the dairy barn, uh, they also have a question, because they're gonna, they want some fuel tanks too, at the, uh, at the butter factory. I don't know the size of them, I would assume if they're any size at all, you guys will wanna take a look at those.
Why, how could they not have planned, if they needed it, well, how could they not have...
I don't know.
What type of fuel are they referring to?
I don't know, it's just told this today, I was asked whether I could do, do, has it changed?
Diesel, not taking diesel.
I, I think he said diesel, which means it would be for tractor trailers.
No, could be also for the forklifts or...
Could be for the forklifts, yep.
Or turn out, it could be fuel, it could be fuel also propane.
That's, that's a big, that'd be a big issue. This is diesel, this is diesel.
That's a big issue.
Yeah, so you guys won't want it secured, that's what I mean.
Inside or out?
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Well, I know our reason.
They'll be a map.
A gray one, I don't know if they're, they're small.
Well, the reason I was saying that is because not turning out, it's like the tanks were dying.
Yeah, that's it, that's absolutely true.
What I needed for...
You know, and so I, I, I would assume that if it's any amount of fuel, that you guys are gonna wanna take a look at that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they wanna be a service station.
Uh, let's see, what else do I have? Seals of cottages, do they want anything out of the voter selection? Well, let's see, they have not gotten their CEAs, um, approved of the, I don't think they've even select, they've even submitted the CEA to the town's consulting attorney yet. The CMP stuff was approved Monday night, and it's gone through several crises since then, uh, but it looks like it's back on track again.
What was that?
Uh, this is the CMP Tiff District.
Yeah.
Uh, that will probably be having a public hearing, that'll probably be in the special town meeting on the twenty fourth of June.
Uh, what month?
March. We're gonna make the deadline. So... It's been quite a drama.
I'm sure.
Well, values keep changing, that's one of the problems. Up or down? Or back and forth?
Doing values.
They, they keep going down, is the issue, started off at six million, we're now looking at one point five.
No.
Huge difference. But we still can make it work, 'cause they also reveal that there'll probably be some future significant valuation increases.
Yeah.
Nothing on the order of six million.
Well, they wanna turn, raise everybody's age.
Well, actually, that's not really the case in this case, because you remember the main reliability program is actually being paid for by NEEPool. And subsequent, the, the taxes that go along with it are being paid by NEEPool. So New England Energy Pool. So it's, it's actually Southern New England that's paying this, because the, the power's coming from Quebec through these power lines down to Southern New England, where they desperately need power. Millstone, One, Two, Three are gonna be going offline, Vermont Yankees going offline, uh, the Uco Power and New England is going bye-bye. Seabrook has only so many years left in it. So, um, this is an alternative, start using hydro protect. So it's a quarter for moving power from there to here, that's why, even though it's been tied...
Town where the toll station?
I, yeah, I wish that were the case.
Wow. Look at, look at May turn like.
Yeah, they have legislative authority, I don't think we're gonna get it. So, Marty, if you wanna get out there and start charging CMP...
Put a big valve there and don't make them pay to turn on.
A kilowatt per hour basis, sure. So we, we've had, we have that, uh, a lot of stuff has been happening, a lot of things have really been happening. I don't know if the board, uh, we haven't gotten you the EDC stuff yet, have we?
No.
Jeez, gotta do that. Get you the ED, the, um, the report from Chesapeake Group has been, the marketing report's being completed, probably read a little bit about it. Uh, get you copies of that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have gotten you a copy for that tonight. But we will get you those, they're online if you wanna read them right now, but you guys should have our copies of it. Uh, EDC will also have to be going into, uh, higher gear on doing their, uh, their economic development plan, because we've gotta have a plan. And so the plan will stop being leadership position, which it has been all along, on this issue, the EDC will be, uh, will be taking more of a lead on that. Uh, another news, Arundel, according to Down East Magazine, Arundel is one of the six best places to, to live in Maine in two thousand fourteen.
Wow.
So if you don't have up to a copy, it's, it is pretty hard.
March issue.
March issue, go out and get it right now.
And get what?
Uh, Down East Magazine has listed Arundel Maine as one of the six best places to live in Maine.
For like small...
Bring your kids. Never say bring your business, it says live, so that means bring your family, six, six kids, you know, load us up with the...
Roger, that's the most negative thing.
Well, I love it.
I mean, come on, get a positive, we get national press and you're dissing it. You know, this...
Right, uh...
What's good press, you know?
I didn't say, you know, one of the best places to establish a business.
Bring, bring us your rungels so you can see where you're driving. I think it was good news.
Oh, yeah, it's absolutely good.
It's a really nice article, you should look at it, it's, we have some copies in town.
I am, I'm being facetious.
I know you are, we do have copies of the magazine in town.
What about cottages?
Uh, cottages, I don't think is going to be able to make it by their March deadline, uh, in terms of doing the Tiff District.
Who's trying to get our feet?
Um, I think there's been some, um, I, I, they don't have all their stuff together yet. The CEA agreement, which is the credit enhancement agreement, has not been completed to give to the, uh, to the, um, selectmen. And selectmen, I think, will have more time on that since that is, that is an agreement that, and quite frankly, I think there needs to be more time to sell that to the Arundel public. Because this is, uh, this is a, um, it's basically a return in tax dollars, uh, to the developer to ensure that the, they get a return on their investment in infrastructure, is what it boils down to. We get the money back in taxes eventually, but the point is that it is a credit enhancement in which they get a return on money to, to make the necessary infrastructure costs upfront early in the program, and it's declining from there. And the, the rest of the tax revenues have to be committed to a town, um, to, essentially, the town economic development program. Now, I put together a program which the selectmen had prioritized, that's in the, uh, in the Tiff, um, application. And, uh, that would provide, the monies that would be generated would provide those, those infrastructure and program improvements, and infrastructure improvements go everywhere from sewer, which is number one priority, sewer on Route one up to campground, that's number one priority. To sidewalks, to lighting, to, uh, another big item is economic development, part-time economic development director, to programs. to programs for economic development, uh, planning, to, uh, small business loans, a loan program, uh, economic startup loan program. Uh, and then some big capital stuff. One of the big cap, biggest capital ones would be a pressure reduction station up at Cates. Uh, not just for Cates, certainly, but it would be a regional facility, which would actually make us a utility. And natural gas is probably pretty much the energy, the energy of the future for Maine. Uh, we have large quantities of natural gas going through the town of Arundel that we don't tap into. We're not, certainly not gonna do what Cumberland and Thelman and Yarmouth did in paying to actually have a, the utility come in and string the lines, which is what they, they're doing right now. They're actually building lines, and it's municipally being, being paid for by the municipality to bring in gas lines into those communities and make them gas communities. Uh, I don't think we're at that point yet, but certainly a deep, a pressurization or depressurization station is critical, cause it's an extremely expensive piece of, of infrastructure. And, uh, if you can, um, there are several takers right from the get-go, one is Cates, obviously, the other's, uh, better for crossing. And the third would be, uh,
Cottage.
Dayton Sand Ground. Air asphalt plant would probably be the biggest concern right now.
Yeah.
They have huge.
They're for all the full load.
Well, there's two ways to do that, one is to, is to string the infrastructure down there, and that's a big cost, as you all know, which they would pick up, and, well, which we would ask them to.
Yeah.
Uh, the second thing that would be interesting is that the, um, that there also is the possibility of, of putting a pressure station and basically fill large containers. So you basically fill large containers of portable gas, portable gas containers, which are parked, parked on the site. So they're basically portable gas, uh, natural gas containers. No different than your propane, that's big, you know, thousand gallon or, uh, ten thousand gallon facilities.
And you want, leave it on wheels?
Leave it on wheels.
For attempted.
Bring it back, fill it up. Yeah, that technology does exist, it's not used much right now, but it does exist, it's used in a lot of facilities.
The compressors have for your L N Gs, turn out to your C N L. Your C N L. So it's that thing like your clean energy, compressors turn out for your infrastructure across, across country.
So, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that, you know, obviously, the people in the town have to vote on each one of these things. But these are some of the, the ideas that we came up with, and of course, new ideas can come up with, and, and, and the priority changes, there's no, there's nothing locking us in. But I think without a doubt, the first priority that the selectmen have indicated, and a lot of business community has, has, has bought into is the idea, let's get some sewer. Uh, I've already had conversations with, um, uh, the sewer district superintendent. I worked with him when I was in Old Orchard Beach, he was the public works director in Saco. Uh, so a good relationship. Uh, Todd has talked to Barry Tennants, the town manager over in Kenabon. They, they have a capacity problem right now. And they can't take much more, but they recognize that they have goals they don't achieve. So they, they're intent on making expansions. Uh, and they're making plans for those expansions, knowing that Arundel would be interested in being part of their system. You know, certainly helps them in making their planning for expansion, because that means those are customers now. It's not future customers that to build the infrastructures, it's customers now. So that's beneficial. But, you know, there's a lot, a lot to be done. Uh, our engineers, Woodard and Kern, are, uh, looking at helping facilitate, uh, getting some grants from D E P to help do the initial planning. They've already actually done a lot of pro bono workforce already. Uh, and they're looking at, uh, doing, uh, helping us get more detailed cost estimates and user estimates based on growth patterns, on, on zoning, and our future, or, or future anticipated growth, growth, uh, rate and a growth pattern. So, uh, a lot of stuff is, is really starting to move now, which is great. Keeping all those balls in the air, so it's interesting. But, um, we're seeing some real movement. So what we're doing in the zoning, in other words, is providing the, the framework and the, the structure in which a lot of this stuff can happen. So we might need to go back and, and look at our zoning again and talk about, if we get sewer, then we're talking about, you know, minimal lot sizes can be based on, on whether you have access to sewer water. Frankly speaking, on how you're gonna get a lot size smaller than one acre, to be effective anyways. So how tight that site was there, and that's only got about an acre of actual available land on it, and everything was jam-packed on the, uh, on the last application we saw, so.
Yeah, that's a huge, that, that's, that's a huge development though, I mean.
It's not that big.
You could put in.
It's not that big. We're talking about a hundred thousand square foot buildings in some points, remember, we had that argument, that's, that's big.
But only.
All the infrastructure involved, that's big.
Yeah, and it's a lot, and it's a lot, and do it, so be it.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I think, I think one acre zoning is fine out there. I think what happens is the ability to maximize the amount of water, and not have to worry about the constraints of.
I thought they said that there was only three lots bigger than.
It's a one point nine acre lot, it's almost a two acre lot.
Was way that size. Oh, for that, for that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I thought, how did Town House Corner?
Town House Corner, uh.
I think there's only three, didn't they say there were only three that were bigger than an acre?
Well.
Six? There was something. You're, you're, you're running along that area there.
Wasn't very many.
Well, actually, at the corner there, where Winks are, there's three that are very undersized that you can't do anything to help with, because.
You might have.
The problem is, is they're all about a third of an acre or less.
Yeah.
And the minimum lot size in the state of Maine, the state of Maine will let you have right now is half an acre without sewer and water.
Do they have sewer and water, they have sewer already on their property?
Who?
On Saco there. Those small lots.
Winks and the others?
Yeah.
Who's sewer do they have?
Your own. Right there on the corner, turn around.
No, when I say sewer, I mean sewer, not septic.
Septic.
Septic's not the same thing. Sewer being, it's taken off-site, disposed of off-site.
Oh, all right, okay.
On-site septic is, and that's why the state has that.
So then it's completely lost, we said in that meeting.
Yeah.
There's a minimum.
Yeah, you can't, you can't cover well half, you can't cover well half, half an acre with the same.
Yeah, cause you turn out, you, you're filling somebody else's teacup.
Exactly, you cannot, physically you cannot fit, meet, meet the setbacks between septic and well, which is on its feet. You just can't do it.
Good.
So you can be, still, I would suggest that in Town House Corner, by the way, that we make a contention upon, that you can have a smaller lot if you have sewer and water. So that's planned in the future, if the sewer expansion or water expansions, then we're not close to the idea. But until that happens, this is gonna be on the lot size. So that's probably how I'm gonna write that to. Okay? Uh, that's, that's about it, I've got for the planners report.
One question for you. Have you turned out, talked to, uh, Kegmont Water? See if they wanna turn out, put a paddle up there for, uh, at their pumping station for a gateway coming into Arundel? Like a water mill?
No, I haven't.
What? I'm just asking.
No. I've got, all I'm gonna get out of those guys.
No, 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 this, this might come.
Those guys are really good to us.
No, this might come.
I'm not pushing them.
Uh, this might come.
Any, any woman about the farms, anybody, come to you, about the farms? And then we bet, about the farms? Any?
Well, no, they're, they've got several buildings for itself.
Okay, so Maine, yeah, they, they, they're just gonna move it over?
Oh, they've got three houses up there.
They're all listed for sale.